Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, August 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by the Governor on June 16th, 2021, August 12th, 2021, public meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. On that topic right there, I did talk to the Board of Health Agent about getting back to in-person meetings. And he said we could, as long as the attendance was under 15 people, which is sometimes tough to tell just from an agenda, looking on paper. Sometimes we can tell. We've had some fairly light ones lately. But he said just because of the rise in the Delta variant cases, they would like to discourage it, but they wouldn't say, "No, we can't." That said, I'll follow up with the Board later on that. But for record-keeping purposes, tonight, myself, Mark Knox present, I have Peter Conroy present, Barbara Mankowski present, Michelle McEckren present, and Jack Lynch present, all members of the Planning Board. Kathy Murray, our clerk, is present. And I would ask at this time that anybody who's going to speak or represent a project identify themselves when they're allowed to take the floor by name and project they're representing. The first item on our agenda tonight is 310 Kenneth Welch for a site plan review. I believe that's going to be Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Yes, sir. It's going to be myself and there's also a project team on board here, Mr. Carr and his attorney representing the project as well is on. I believe the attorney is going to start off the presentation if that's Mr. Chair.
Good evening. Can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So just for the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I am outside counsel for Nature's Remedy, the applicant with this request. I'm here, the seat for Nature's Remedy in connection with its request for a minor modification with respect to your previously granted site plan review by this Board. Got to give just a really brief background with respect to why we're here and some background with respect to the pending merger that was as described in the letter that I had submitted to the Board. I do however want to mention Jamie is obviously here this evening as the site civil engineer. But I also want to mention that John Bradley, sorry, John Brady, who was mentioned previously, both representatives of Nature's Remedy, they are on this call. In addition to that, there are also representatives from Jushi MA as well. So just by way of background, this Board granted not only site plan review approval with respect to this site, which is an adult use and medical marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility, approximately 50,000 square feet in an industrial district. But in addition to that, they'd also granted a special permit. This is in 19. At the time, the zoning bylaw Phil gave the authority with respect to the Planning Board the right to grant a special permit for particular adult use for cannabis. And so that's why we were with the Board. Subsequent to that, however, that there was an amendment to the bylaw as well as the zoning map, which gave, for all intents and purposes, all authority with respect to the issuance of special permits for both adult use and medical marijuana use facilities to the ZDA. So just from a standpoint, we're here tonight with respect to only the modification of the site plan that was previously granted. We are on the agenda for the zoning Board of Appeals for next week. So we will be meeting with them, hopefully, to the extent that this Board approves the site plan tonight. So as some of you may recall, for those who were on the Board, the last time we met, when the plan was granted, when the plan was approved, as I had mentioned, this is approximately 50,000 square foot facility and is used for adult use and medical cultivation and product manufacturing. Subsequent to that, there's been some renovations within the building. There was a previously used office, which was the previous operator and occupant of that office space, approximately 10,000 square feet, was utilized by another tenant of the property, which actually is an affiliate of the landlord, Cold Storage. That 10,000 square foot area is shown on the plans that Jamie is going to present to the Board tonight and that we had submitted to Kathy Murray in connection with the application. The 10,000 square foot area is, it includes both office use as well as a break room area and locker rooms. Technically, they are accessory to the cultivation and the product manufacturing use of the facility, of the cannabis facility. So they are all really used, one and the same, the same employees that utilize this 10,000 square foot area. However, based on discussions with the building commissioner, the building commissioner for the town, he had indicated that that would rise to the level of requiring a modification of the site plan. So that's why, that's why we're here tonight. In addition, there were some minor changes with respect to other parts of the floor area. So for example, there was, at one point, there was contemplated a dispensary by a different operator at this, within the footprint of the building that has now been converted to Nature's Remedies use as an additional flower room. So those, we had submitted as part of our application floor plans that show some of these changes. And that is also part of the site plan that, again, that Jamie is going to get into in a moment. The other piece, the other component that I want to just touch upon briefly, and this really is a matter for the, as part of what the ZBA will be determining when we meet with them next week, pertains to the pending merger. So Nature's Remedy of Massachusetts, Inc., is the current holder of the special permits, both the adult use and the medical use for the facility. However, because of this pending merger between Nature's Remedy and Jushi MA, Inc., the surviving entity of that merger, when that happens, when and if that happens, upon the closing of that merger, will be Jushi MA. So when that happens, Jushi MA will then become the holder of all of these permits, including both local permits that have been issued by various zoning boards in not only Lakeville but other communities, and also with respect to any state-level licensing from the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. We have met with the Lakeville Board of Selectmen with respect to the transfer of the HCA. That was, that is a host community agreement by and between Nature's Remedy and the town. And the Board of Selectmen unanimously approved the transfer of that HCA, all of the right title and interest of the HCA from Nature's Remedy to Jushi MA, subject to the condition that the merger actually closes. So we've met with the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. We've also met with a number of select boards and other communities, as well as planning boards and other communities, where Nature's Remedy has similar assets, has cannabis-related facilities, seeking transfer modification of special permits that may be in Nature's Remedies name that need to be ultimately in Jushi's name. So that is the other component that, again, we're seeking that approval from the Planning Board. But I did want to give you that background, just so the members understand from the merger aspect of this, what's happening with respect to that. And so with that, I'd like to segue and give the baton to Jamie. And Jamie will, I think Jamie, you can have, you can take over the screen with respect to the sharing of the plan. So Jamie's going to go over the plan that was submitted to Kathy Murray. Jamie?
Good evening. Mr. Chair, do you mind if I share the screen?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Again, this is the Kenneth Welch site. The Nature's Remedy portion of the building is in this vicinity where I'm moving the cursor. They're looking to take over the 10,000 square feet on the second story of this building in this vicinity here. What we've done as part of this plan is designated where the parking spaces are to just allocate and show, one, how many spaces are needed for this, and then number two is where they're located. I'm going to go over that briefly. What we did was the 10,000 square feet of office is actually existing office now. They are going to be making changes. The inside of the new offices, there will be, there'll be some kind of a changing locker room and there'll also be a lunch break room that will be on the second floor as well. So it won't be just offices up there, but that will be part of the office area. The other thing is, is when we did the calculation, it was 34 spaces for the office and then 33 for the largest shift, which totaled 67 spaces. And we have 68 spaces allotted to us on this plan. And I want to go over that real quick with you. In this vicinity right now, which is in the rear of the building, and kind of in conform, well, it's in conformance with the 2020 plan by Azor. They were originally going to be 13 spaces back here. If you were to drive out there right now, there's an existing shed there and there's actually some pallets. So I don't know if any of the Board members got a chance to go out there. I went out there today just to see, because this is kind of a construction in progress site. These lines in this vicinity here to be painted, and there's going to be eight spaces that are at Nature's Remedy. This entire right-hand side coming up here is all also designated for Nature's Remedy. It's 33 spaces. There's actually an existing concrete pad with two dumpsters in this vicinity. So it's very clearly delineated straight down. These are the outside building mechanics that are in place. But over in here, there are seven spaces, including a handicap space in this vicinity here. This is the fenced and secure parking for the, I believe, the delivery van or the van that may contain product. Anyways, this is gated in. I believe this was all part of the original approval. And then based on even a previous site plan before the 2020 site plan by Azor, there was a permit given for this, you know, circular parking area in the front here that was to contain 20 spaces. So between the eight, well, the eight spaces that will be striped on existing pavement, the 33, the seven, and the 20, we'll actually have 68 total spaces, which is one more than we need to meet the zoning requirements. So in our case, we feel that we, you know, meet the intent of what the zoning bylaw is asking us for. We're not proposing any new grading, any new pavement, any types of changes in utilities. We're just going to put some striping down as needed. As you saw, this is, this was recently paved mark. I believe you probably see this better than anybody.
Yesterday or today, I think we finished paving today.
Yep. So Mr. Carr has explained to us that the line work is going to be happening very shortly. He also is explaining that the shed and the pallets that are back here are going to be moved right away as well. And they'll be striping back here and striping up here. Mr. Carr, how soon do you think that will be happening?
Well, I believe that, yeah, it's going to be so hot in the next couple of days that probably sometime mid-next week, I believe.
So the striping is imminent, as you can see. I mean, there's still, because of the new septic that went in over in here, there's still some gravel. So I believe the site owners overall are going to be repaving that area there and the likes. But from Nature's Remedy's standpoint, they're pretty much striping and that's pretty much it to finish up with their, their previous projects have been. And so I think we're in pretty good shape.
So I'd like to ask, while you're bringing up the parking thing, as you mentioned, I see the site quite often. I go by there. It's a mess. And when I say it's a mess, I'm not talking about construction. I'm talking about parking. I'm under the impression, and correct me if it's changed, there was going to be a dispensary. Is that no longer going to happen? I thought I heard that that space was taken back over by Nature's Remedy.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. There's not going to be a dispensary.
There will not be a dispensary in that building at any point.
That's correct.
Because that circular area was designed and approved for the dispensary. This property, to me, it becomes a little bit of a convoluted mess from a Planning Board approval standpoint, because there are so many tenants utilizing different spots. For example, there's that Northeast Alternatives tenant that has parking down on the other end. None of this shows on this site plan. I know you're not here for them. But again, it would, it'd be nice to have a plan that kind of showed everything. That said, I've spoken with the building commissioner and the zoning Board of Appeals Chairman and the fire chief. Fire chief had an issue with signage. Because I guess as this project progresses, they're going to upgrade the fire alarm system inside. He had said he was given a verbal from the building owner that beacons would be put on the outside of the building at each of the separate tenants' spaces, which is great for fire. But that doesn't really help for ambulatory response. So if it was an ambulance that responded to the building from, not the town of Lakeville, was not familiar, he had suggested it would be good to have, even if it was small signage on all doors, entrance, egress doors, for an ambulance to come that, you know, wouldn't obviously be responding to a fire alarm pole with a beacon flashing. Because, you know, in moments like that, seconds count. And he said it's just all radio talk back and forth between three or four people to try and direct somebody to the right door in such a big facility. That said, Mr. Bistonette, could you go over, I mean, again, I say the parking's a mess. Most of the spots that you called out, other than the circular area, because they're paving it, seem to be filled during the course of the day, even though the lines aren't painted?
Look, Mark, you got really quiet in there. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me pretty good there?
Oh, great now, yep.
Okay. So during the course of a regular business day, it appears that most of the parking spaces called out, there are going to be lines painted.
Zing, Mark. Can't hear you, Mark.
Yeah. I don't know what else to do. But anyway.
I think I heard what you said. I think you said that most of the spaces, say the lines are to be striped, were called out?
They appear to be filled with cars every day.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So when, when the past, I've been there twice in this past week, and you're correct. The majority of the cars are, well, most of the spots here are filled. The spots back here were not. There were two trailers in two of the spots over here today that were not there on, I believe, Tuesday. Up in here, there was some vacancy today when I was there. And I think temporary displacement, there's some people parking up in the front near the street. I know over in here is supposed to be a parking area. I don't believe this is a long-term parking area over on here. I think once the 20 spaces in the front open up and these eight spaces in the back, I think that will help. Also, with the construction, from my understanding, that's going on, we've, you've got the construction workers that are going in with the additional, the additional vehicles. That's right, Mr. Carr, correct?
Yeah, I can qualify some of that, Mr. Chairman. And that is, you know, the, the employees, basically, they're taking the route of least resistance and they're parking in front, because that's where the door is, as opposed to parking in that back quarter area where it's usually free back there and there's parking. They end up parking up in the front where, yeah, I agree. It's, it's, it's us creating some discipline amongst our people to park out back where they're supposed to park and not in front where I think you see they park. So we'll, we will address that and make that so, you know. And once, once our circular parking is back in order and the tractor trailers are out of the back, you know, and some of this construction subsides, the site will be a different site.
So I don't have a problem with the vehicles parking in the front as much as you're not at capacity yet. You're adding on 10,000 square feet of office. You're bringing in, it looks like another seven to 10 people into that office. And the parking lot looks full now.
This is John Brady. Can I address that, Bob? The people that are going upstairs are already working at the facility. We're just kind of jammed in down there, Mr. Chairman. And secondly, the lease guarantees us 70 spots on the facility site that we've signed. So, and right now, we don't fully utilize all of the spots. So some of the other tenants in the building have parked in our spots simply because we haven't been utilizing them and needing them at this time. And there are some ongoing construction projects and the construction people do park in some of those spots. So we have ample parking when we need it. We haven't chased everybody out because we haven't had to use it at this point. We have really approximately three shifts, two full, two major shifts and, you know, people overnight just to make sure things don't go wrong. So we really haven't utilized all 70 of the spots. And Tom would have to provide us two more in the other side of the building if we needed them. So that's, that's one of the issues. Bob is right. I'm responsible for the facility and people have been parking in front. And we ask them not to, and, you know, it doesn't always work out because of the closeness. And as Bob said, people get lazy. But that is going to be cleaned up. But if you were to, if we were to push the other people out that use our spots that really don't have a right to them, we would have more than ample parking.
And again, so that goes to my earlier point, that this is a convoluted site with four-plus tenants. And again, to what you just said, shared parking. It looks full, and I understand it's not all you. But now we're approving something and we don't know the entire mass of the building, the design load for each tenant's space. And if there's enough for everybody when this is all done, and if they're just driving over and taking your spaces, it's a mess. At some, at some point, there's going to be on-street parking if, you know, you bring in more people and then the other businesses, they stop working and they start hiring people and fill up more spaces. I don't have confidence that you have enough parking. I guess I'd like to see some numbers on employees per shift. And we kind of need that for the entire building, not just for you. If there's no one going to monitor who parking where.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there's, the latest plan that we had at our disposal was the, there was a 2020 plan in connection with the dispensary that was endorsed by this Board. That had the most up-to-date numbers with respect to the other tenants and their use and parking that was required in connection with, with the site. So our, what we had tasked Jamie to do was to really focus on Nature's Remedies parking and the parking that they knew that they had and that they had a right to, and that was previously approved by the Board. So that was, that's what we've done. The site is, I agree, it's a multi-tenanted site. And it's a site that can change from time to time, from tenant to tenant. And so in order to get a snapshot in time, I mean, it's, you know, that would be a difficult task, I think, to do an inventory of all of the, all the other tenants. We took the best information that we had, that was approved by this Board relatively recently, and we were hopeful that that would be sufficient for approval. We know that our parking, as John had mentioned, and I think as Bob has, Bob had alluded, the parking for Nature's Remedy, which is really what we're here for, its heating, is, is more than sufficient. And the only reason why we're here tonight at all is with respect to this, this office area, which is an office and locker, it's an accessory use to what was previously there, which, as I had mentioned before in my opening remarks, this, this office area was previously used as an office area. So it's a net zero gain with respect to the use and operation of the site.
Yep, understood. Barbara, do you have a comment or question you wanted to ask?
Yeah, so thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. As I drove by recently to go to the dump, I happened to drive by this property and was really surprised. It didn't look good at all. There was parking on the grass. I know we had approved that circular part of the driveway, which was being used. So, you know, it's hard to, I think it's hard when we have such pride in that industrial park. We want, really want to maintain the integrity and the appearances of the properties in that park. So I would encourage the owner to speak with his employees, because that, that is kind of an issue for us. You mentioned, you guys, that there were 68 spaces being proposed tonight, but there were 70 spaces. Is that correct, Jamie? There were 68 spaces we're talking about? But then the tenant mentioned that they had a right to 70 in the lease. So we've got a difference of two spaces there. And I guess I'm concerned about that. And then where are these other employees coming from that are parking on the property? Like, do we have other properties? We don't have enough parking?
Right now, this is John Brady. We, Tom would provide us two other parking spots off-site, off of our property on some of his other properties if needed for the 70. There, there's a lot of construction that goes on in that facility and at Tom's facility. So mostly, it's construction people that are coming into that park there that will, once that construction is completed, won't happen. It's a good point, bad on us really for allowing the people to park on the grass. We will, we will rectify that immediately. They, as, if you saw the plan, the problem is they park all, they have to park all the way in the back. And, you know, you know, human nature.
Well, I think, Mr. Brady, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're parking on the grass because you just paved. And, yeah, they could park in the back, but...
No, there were people parked on the circle and on the grass. They were overloaded. They're just overloaded.
They're parked on the circle and they're parked on the grass. And we need, we will move them off that grass. We've talked to them. And, you know, it just goes away. So we will remove them immediately. You won't, hopefully, effective tomorrow, you won't see any people parking on that grass.
Jamie, how many spots do you have approved for the entire facility?
That's a difficult question, because the original site plan was done by Azor. On Azor's plan, he shows 121 spaces provided. When we counted up the spaces of using his plan outside of the scope of my study and then looking at Nature's Remedy, I think we came up with 117.
Yeah. It's funny, you know, I miss Zing. Don't you miss Zing? He was great. And I remember when we went through this, he was very concerned about the parking. And you are, you know, so, okay. Thank you. I'll pass my seat. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Jack, you had a comment you wanted to make?
Should Nature's Remedy put signage out on each one of the parking spaces saying, "For Nature's Remedy, employees only," each one of the spaces? So it's clear that these spaces are only for them and that they, they in turn should require their employees to park down and back in this other space that he was, the gentleman was talking about earlier.
Mr. Brady, you have the whole right end of the building as your parking, correct?
Yeah, sand in the back.
Right. The circular area, the right hand, and, and in the rear of the right. That's all Nature's Remedy. So it's, it's folks from either Cold Storage or Northeast Growers that are parking over there for now?
Well, Northeast doesn't come over on our side. But Cold Storage will, when they have construction people or things going on, they'll park there. And since we haven't been using all the spots, especially the ones in the back, you know, they don't really... And since we haven't been using all the spots, uh, especially the ones in the back, you know, they don't really have much to say about to. You know, if Tom wants to use them and we're not using them, I don't have a problem. But, um, but we are guaranteed contractually. To have 50, uh, spots on the site there, plus the 20 in the circle.
So should not you put up signage that, you know, says, says for Nature's Remedy employees only? So that the other people know that I better not do that. I better not park there.
We can do that. Yes, we can. If that, that's what you like, we certainly can make that happen.
I mean, that's my recommendation. Mark, you, you're the.
Yeah.
I defer to you.
I, I think for, for just a clarity, it's probably not a bad thing to do, Mr. Brady. Um, especially if there are site-specific spots, for example, Sea Trade is tucked kind of in the back there. Do, do they have spaces over there as well, or are they parking on the opposite end of the building?
No, they, they've got four spaces in the back which leave us a net of eight spaces left over.
Right.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Or make a comment. I guess, um, you know. If we were to put up some sort of signage on this property to designate the parking, you know, it just has to be, there is something very modest. Um, you know, I'd hate to see, you know, a series of different signs in front of every parking spot or something like that. Um, I, I don't know if that's the way to handle it, but, you know, um. Just my two cents.
Again, uh, spray, you could spray paint it on the asphalt.
Right, that's my point. I agree with you. We don't need signs. We can just, uh, spray paint it on the asphalt along with the striping. I mean, we're happy to do whatever you would like if you to designate those spots. That's really not a problem for us.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter, do you, do you want to add anything?
Uh, for the most part, I'm, I'm at ease with this. I knew when we approved this the first time. This is like at max capacity parking and it seems like, um, that's like the, the only issue we have. So. If they're gonna say they're gonna make it work, I'm okay with that. I like the idea of, of painting the, um, of, once it's striped. Then paint some kind of symbol for all their, um, all their lots. And everybody stays where they're supposed to and, you know. Make this work somehow, because I, I, they can't be on the street, absolutely not, not on Kenneth Welsh, so. They'll, they'll have to make it work. So, that's it.
Thanks, Peter. Michelle, did you want to add anything?
Um, thank you, Mark. Uh, the only thing I noticed was that, you know, it, it on, um, in our agenda packet. We had a copy of the, uh, application for special permit that was referred to and it did say. Uh, we are providing 76 spaces of paved let secure off-street parking on the property. No street parking is permitted and, you know, continuing. So I think this, this issue of the parking, it really. You know, it should be addressed properly. I think what you had suggested, Mark, um. You know, taking a full inventory of what is needed for the building, especially if there's multiple tenants. Um, now's the time to do it.
Oh, I almost feel that that's the responsibility of the building owner, um, not Mr. Brady or Mr. Carr. Um.
Mr. Chair, can I just say that, um. Uh, we, we did, we did submit, uh, a previously approved plan, not only. Uh, Nature's Remedies previously approved plan, but the 2020, uh, previously endorsed plan by the, by the board. As I said, the, the tenants can come and go, operators can come and go, employees on a shift can go up and down. Um, this is the type of a site that's obviously very active. It's unfortunate that, that we're, you know, we're before you now. The timing doesn't seem to be great, uh, in that there's. Construction activities that are happening at the site that are exacerbating. I think some of the. Uh, concerns that the board has raised, uh, which I, I have personally not been by the site, but, um. I can, I can understand, uh, the displeasure of the board, but to me, that sounds more, um. A, a, a sort of period in, in time with respect to construction activities, which, uh. You know, for people that are in that hurdle, um, if construction work is happening, then. Uh, that, that's just what happens with respect to parking and traffic and their, their impacts.
But it's not, it's not permanent. Um, just, I, I do see the site often and please don't take it as I'm displeased. As much as it's just our, our concern for a, a, a healthy work environment and. A, a prosperous business is what we want to see. Uh, most of the construction traffic or the vehicles appear to be parked up and down the road. They actually park on both sides of the street, not on the site. So it, and Mr. Brady or Mr. Carr, correct me if I'm wrong. But, but again, it appears like those construction vehicles are not taking up. Uh, employee parking.
Um, Mr. Chairman, those are not our construction vehicles that you see on the road there. Those are northeast alternatives, not ours.
So do you have different construction vehicles?
We have people, we have some people coming in cars to work on construction. Those construct, or Willie Stettlemann, and they all park on our site. The trucks that you see on the side of Kenneth Welsh Drive are never ours. They do not belong to us. Those are all associated with northeast alternatives.
Okay, so. It's fair to say that the, the parking for your construction is within your 68 spaces or there.
Right, we're very aware. Um, uh, I think, uh, one of your board members, uh, talked about, uh, zinc. I spent an enorm, the reason we put in 70 spots on our, in our lease, we made an amendment to qualify for those 70 spots. Was because I spent a lot of time with zinc on the site and we walked the entire place. He and I counted every spot. On that site. And, uh, as you can imagine, knowing zinc. And we, uh, we made sure that he was comfortable. He walked through with the plans. Uh, he approved it. He helped me enormously, uh, explaining why, what his concerns were. And, and Brian, and, uh, that's why we have in our lease that we have 50 guaranteed spots. Plus the 20 in the circle. So.
So, Mr. Brady, the, the thing that actually really puts me at ease, um, and I just want to hear it from you, is that. Monroe Associates is not going to put a dispensary in there.
They are not. Their lease has been, um, has been canceled. And so, we take, we took over the lease.
Right, so you're just using it for your cultivation business and offices and whatnot. And so my recommendation is that. We make a recommendation as a board to the zoning board of appeals, uh, for the signage and the parking. And that the, a condition on this special permit state that there will be no dispensary in the building. Um. And we continue our hearing just to make sure that there's no amendments on the plan that come back from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, and also I would like to see the signage, um. For each respective business put on the building. And again, I know it's not your problem, Mr. Brady, that northeast growers or. Or Sea Trade have a sign, but you, you need to have a sign and we, we will make sure that. Rest of the businesses put up signs just for that 911 emergency call. It's not a fire with a beacon flashing. Um, so a- again, with you stating that there's not going to be a dispensary, that basically takes my concerns out of the parking issue is. As long as, uh, you're comfortable with your 68 spaces servicing your business. Uh, it will make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals and they'll condition it in the special permit or the amendment to the special permit.
There will not be a dispensary there, uh, that we can go on record for that with us or I don't, there is no intent we. And secondly, we are very comfortable with the spots that we have there.
Okay. Um.
And we will not have people parking on the grass as of tomorrow.
All right, that, I appreciate you addressing those concerns. Um, so if any other board members would like to add anything, I think that it would be wise for us to. Make a motion to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals and continue our site plan review until our next scheduled hearing. Just so that, again, not to drag the process on, but just so that the final plan that comes back is the, the plan that we sign off on. And that's allowing the zoning board of appeals to make any changes or whatever they need to do in their permit process. Uh, Mr. Smith, did you want to say something?
I just, um, just as a matter of procedure, Mr. Chair, uh, with respect to continuing this meeting. Um, number one, ha- not having been before this board before in, in Lakeville. I- i- is that, is that a, a sort of the town's protocol or this board's protocol with respect to this type of a scenario? Where there's a, a recommendation, um, by the board with respect to a ZBA application that, that the meeting may open and continued?
So it's. It, I don't want you to take it as it's a bad thing as much as I don't want to sign a plan that's not the final plan.
Mm-hmm.
So the zoning board of appeals is going to have the final say.
Yep.
Consider this a conditional approval. Is how I look at it is, we, we're basically looking to approve with a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. But I can't tell you what they're gonna do. And so if they tell you to do three other things that aren't on the plan. I'm not signing it until they do it. And then we'll come back in a rubber stamp at our next meeting, sign it.
Understood. And so, uh, to you, Mr. Chair, or perhaps to Kathy, when is the next planning board meeting?
I believe it's in September, uh, the first. Can tell you right now. September 9th. Okay, okay. Um, there is one other thing. Um. The fire access road behind the building doesn't show on this plan and it needs to show. So it's, uh, I think a 20-foot wide lane along the whole back of the building, Jamie?
Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll pick that up. I'm sure it's in place. I haven't, I haven't actually seen it, but I'll send the surveyors out to pick it up.
Thank you. Barbara?
Possible to ask Jamie to put the, the parking for the whole building onto one plan so we can see that, or is that unrealistic, Jamie?
Um. No, it's, it's, it's not unrealistic. It's, um, I'm not sure that the entire site is, um, is striped. The way that it's supposed to be yet. So, um, and again, that's not anything due to my client. It's more due to the other tenants in the building. So, um. We can show, we can show whatever additional line striping is there, but, um. But I, I can't guarantee that it's done the way that the approved plans are. We can only, really only have control of what my client's working on.
What do you think about that? Do you think we should have a plan with the, do you think it's even worth the effort?
Uh. I mean, again, it, to their point, it, it is a bit of a task for somebody to go get the occupant load of your neighbor.
Yep.
Um.
But it's hard when it's a convoluted building.
Is that the, is that the owners on the, owner of the building?
Hang on, Jack. Jamie, could you actually work with Kathy just to, to get what's on record at the town hall? Try to just, just take what's already been provided. Uh, I, I'm not looking for you to redraw something as much as just, you can clearly mark out, this was. Approved by the board on this date. This was approved on the board on this date. I, 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 just to show. If, if nothing else, it'd be nice if it was on the rec, plan of record when we do sign it. And I'm, I'm not looking to task you with. Uh, like I say, going around and checking occupant load and.
Exactly.
Do you mind if I share the screen for one second, Mr. Chair?
Right ahead.
Thank you. This was the previous plan of record that we reached out to Kathy for. Um, it was in, it was in February of last year. Um, but this, this shows the parking spaces over in here for the far left. Um, and it shows, it shows the spaces over in here. I did encounter a couple of discrepancies. Um, for example, um, over in here, the striping's a little bit different and up in here it is a little different as well. Um, we've made note of that on our plan, so that's the updated plan of record. Um, in that aspect, over in here, I didn't really spend any time researching it, nor did I check out the gravel access for fire. Um, what we'll do is I'll go over, if there is line striping, I'll pick it up. The gravel access, I can definitely pick that up if it's there and show it. And then what we can do is I can take and I can pull these, this line work into the plan set. And just reference, uh, Mr. Pink's plan from 2020. Um, you know, for, just so that the, the plan stays consistent going forward.
Perfect. Through, through the chair, I think Jamie, I, the plan that you had submitted. Um, either the one that we, that we submitted to Kathy, uh, or that you may have supplemented with a minor amendment. Made reference to the, that, those plans.
Oh, it, it does, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I think, I think what you're asking is that, um, we incorporate, we make reference to that 2020. Plan, which is in part, uh, what Jamie used to devise this updated plan. And, um, I think you're asking to, to include, essentially include the, the parking counts. That were in that 2020 plan on this plan.
Well, I'm really just looking for, I, I don't, what you provided tonight for. I'm gonna call that the east end of the building. I hope that's correct. Uh, which is the rear, a- all of the Nature's Remedy parking that we've shown tonight, that 76 spaces or whatever it is. I want that on the plan as we're proposing to approve. In addition to that, show the parking at the other end of the building for northeast growers that's on that. Plan that we just pulled up on the screen, just to show stuff on the other end, that it's just not a loading dock area anymore.
Absolutely.
And I'm not looking to hold you to the design of what they do down there as much as just reference that they have. On that plan was approved and we're carrying it over to our plan because it is a singular site.
Well, I appreciate it. And, and that was my, my concern was getting into other people's designs and. And people that I'm not working for, but I have no problem referencing the plan.
Yeah, you can, you could put a note right on their parking spaces that it was designed by somebody else in a previous hearing and it's not part of this hearing. I'm fine with that.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. So I'd like to make a motion. To send a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Uh. To make sure that the fire access lane is shown on the plan. Uh, to condition the self-special permit to not have a dispensary. Uh, a copy of the amended site and plan be referenced in the special permit. Signage or paint for Nature's Remedy parking spaces be shown on the site plan. Uh, and Nature's Remedy egress access doors be marked with signage for emergency response. Uh, would anybody want to add anything to that and then second that motion?
I think you did a nice job of seconding that information.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself unanimously. Um. And so I'd like to. Motion that this is a conditional approval. With those changes to be made and that the zoning board of appeals. Uh, approve the special permit with any changes noted and those be added to the plan of record. For the planning board to sign at our next scheduled meeting or whichever meeting. After the zoning board of appeals acts on the special permit.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack?
Aye.
And Michelle, that was an aye, correct? You're muted.
Sorry, yes, aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Um. So we hope to see you at our September 9th meeting at 7:00 PM. Uh, with those approvals and we will, I'll follow along on the zoning board of appeals meeting next week.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one sort of, um, administrative question. I see that we are number six on the agenda as well, uh, whether, was this item and number six again consolidated? Or?
Are you talking about our agenda or the zoning board agenda?
Uh.
This would be the planning board agenda.
Planning board agenda.
It was the recommendation for the ZBA, which was item six.
Okay, yeah, so we've kind of killed two birds with one stone. I, I jumped ahead and made the recommendation to the ZBA with my first motion. So, uh, it, just for your clarity, would all planning board members agree? That we've taken item six off of the agenda with that motion?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yep, Barbara, Michelle?
Yes.
So that would conclude our business with you tonight. Yes, so that's all of our action for nature's remedy.
Got it.
Thank you.
I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you, good night.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is. An A and R plan for thirty-eight Lakeside Ave. Uh, this is presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers. Uh, yes, and that's you, Jamie?
Good evening, it is. Uh, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Uh, this is thirty-eight Lakeside Ave and Mr. Chairman, again, if I may share the screen?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Alright, this is, uh. This is actually roughly twenty acre parcel on Lakeside Ave that goes all the way down to the pond. Uh, there are several structures on the property. Uh, there's an existing house, garage, there's another cottage style house and a boat house on, on the overall property. Um, the owner of the property is looking to, uh. Divide the land into lots one and lot two. Um, as you can see, we have adequate frontage, meet the, uh, front yard circles. Uh, we have, uh, more than enough area and for zoning purposes, uh, the lot is a minimum of fifty feet in width. Uh, or greater at every, uh, at every point so that we can count the area and frontage, uh, to, to be included. Um, there is a small wetland area up in the front in here. Um, but besides that, uh, the other part is down at the pond itself. Uh, it's a very nice property and we're hoping, uh, for. An approval from the, uh, or an endorsement from the planning board tonight.
Um, so I did speak to the building commissioner. Uh, he reviewed the plan. He, he felt it was good. Um, I guess the only concern that I have, and it's really not an A and R concern as much as just a, some kind of a long-term legal concern. For if these, I assume one will be sold. Um. The access, existing gravel driveway.
Yes.
It starts out on lot two, crosses over onto lot one. It clips back on lot two. Um. And it, it's not that it exists and I'm sure that they're gonna maybe make different access or would it be utilized? Is there an easement going to be required?
It, so, uh, it's a great question. Um, it's, it's actually a father and son. Um, so the, I believe the dad is going to live with his wife here and the son. And his family are going to live in this house, or not in this house, but on this property here. Um, I believe that the proposal is going to be to, uh, put in a new driveway on this lot, bring it in, connect it to the existing driveway. Keep this existing driveway, bring it in, and then bring a driveway down and around to the house. So they, they'll each have their own driveway, uh, is the intention that we've spoken about. Um, I know that, uh, the conservation, because of the wetland proximity, will definitely be seeing this. Um, as will me and Board of Health, but, uh, the intention is definitely to each one have their own driveway on their own property.
Um, because I know part of the A and R handbook is access and it looks, looks very tight. Where the driveway rounds, basically against the wetlands and would you foresee a problem? If conservation didn't wanna, or that they may not wanna have that driveway run parallel to the wetlands on the lot two?
I, I mean, if, if conservation did have a real problem with it, they also have, uh, this roadway down here with an existing drive. Um, this was actually Mrs. Pink's house, um, John's mom. And my understanding was that, um, a lot of times vehicles would actually, and again, I don't know. The, how, the frequency, but would come down the road here and come right in via, they had an easement that cut across right here, right to the house. So.
It really would be a lot two, I would say, would have the issue.
Yep, and this, this goes right on, this goes right on to lot two.
So, so they could access it there. If there was an issue with conservation not allowing them to come off Lakeside Ave and hug that wetland. They still would have access, so access would not be an issue.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, would anybody else like to, uh, make any comments on this from the planning board? Uh. Nice, you know what else? You're good, Barbara?
Your, your concerns are on, on par, Mark. Thank you very much.
Alright, and just so I'm sure we have quite a few attendance, folks here in attendance tonight is, if anybody else would like to speak to this, please, uh. Let it be known to the chair so I could, uh, call on you. And I see no hands up. So I'm going to assume no other comments. Uh, that said, I'm going to make a motion to endorse this A and R plan for lot one and lot two of. Thirty-eight Lakeside Avenue. Can I get a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, both aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is an A and R plan for Barstow and Montgomery Street. Uh, with, I have. The lot block and page numbers M zero eighteen dash D zero zero one dash L zero zero two. And L zero zero two B and L zero zero two C. Presented by ET Engineering. So do I have somebody here from ET Engineering?
Uh, yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name is Azwad Tenero. Uh, representing the applicant, yeah, as well as, uh, ET Engineering, the plan, uh. The firm responsible for the plan. I am the, uh, registered land surveyor that is responsible for the plan. Uh, may I, uh, share my file or? Do I have permission to share a file, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you do.
Okay, um, can, can you see it?
No.
No?
Here it comes.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay, so, uh, basically, uh, uh, the lots that we, uh. Divided, uh, we modify the, this lot right here, uh, which is block, let me zoom in a little bit more. Okay, so map eighteen block one lot two B and, uh, map eighteen block one, which one? This one here, uh, lot two C. So this land right here is the existing lot line, uh, between the two parcels. And so, uh, we're creating this lot right here. Uh, it's a single family house lot and, uh, showing the circle to, uh. Excuse me, to demonstrate that it, uh, meets the, uh, relevant, uh, zoning requirements. This here will now become, because it does not conform to the. Land space requirement, does not have a lot width and does not have a circle, so I have added a note right here. That says that this parcel, so instead of designating that as a lot number, I've given it a parcel number as a parcel A. Uh, the intent down the road is that this here will serve as the actual's access width to the back lot right here. Which is currently under, uh, sixty-one A. So this here will not be the building lot until such time. That we file with the planning board a subdivision plan to create an access through here to that back parcel. So the intent right now is to make this here and conforming house lot.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Could I get you to unshare your screen so it's a little easier for me to see all the attendance here tonight?
Yeah.
Um, do any planning board members have any comments on this? And I will say, I spoke to the building commissioner. He said that. Uh, he felt that this met the requirements of the A and R and requirements. Uh, I, I know it has frontage, the critical access and meets the front yard circle requirements and also the area. Uh, so any planning board members with comments? Barbara?
Um, yeah, my question for the, um, surveyor is, is the parcel that we're creating here, this new lot one, is that parcel in sixty-one right now? Chapter sixty-one?
I don't believe it is. I don't believe that it is. The parcel that we will be coming to the plant, back to the planning board at a future date, that back parcel is sixty-one A.
Okay, so the one that we're creating, parcel A, is part of that chapter or are we referring?
It will be combined with that, uh, uh, at a future date when we do a subdivision plan for it.
Alright.
So, I, I was led to believe that the, the land you're dividing today may be under chapter sixty-one. Uh, but that doesn't affect our decision here today. Uh, that's just if there's a land transfer. You guys need to make sure that you clear that. Lean on the property from sixty-one.
Yes, sir.
You're aware of that. Um. Okay, if there's no other comment from planning board members, I'd like to open the floor to any butters. Uh, would anybody, Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm not in a butter, uh, as far as I can tell, the proposed plan here today. Um, and my concern really has to do with. Um. As this. Proposed lot tonight gets developed and any future development behind me, I'm on sixteen Barstow Street, which is kind of. Right in the middle. Uh, I've been here for, um, well, since nineteen seventy-three. And I've seen a lot of water come off the back properties behind me. And down at the end of Barstow Street where it, um, uh, meets Montgomery. And my major concern here is that. What, as, as soil gets moved around and development happens and vegetation and trees and so forth get taken out. My concern is that that is going to create, uh, less absorption into the soil and therefore more water. Coming off of that back soil property, uh, into Barstow Street residents, my resident. Uh, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. And also, as I say, at the end of the street, uh, where it meets Montgomery. Um, there's frequently, especially in wintertime, a, a lot of. Uh, ponding and water that generally stays, uh, in that area. Um, back toward the middle of the street, sort of in front of my house, but a little off to the side. Years ago, a dozen fifteen-ish, somewhere around there, the town put in a, a drainage basin. Because of the water that was coming across, uh, the lot next to me. Uh, into the road, up over the road and into the property across the street. So there's been, especially when there's a heavy rain, uh, it, it definitely impacts my property. Uh, from time to time, I kiddingly call the flow of water to the, uh, side of my driveway, the Marshall River. Because it flows like crazy. And I'm, I'm seriously concerned about the impact of the water out back there. And again, as I understand tonight's proposal. That doesn't come down, uh, uh, all the way to my house. However, I'm guessing, and I don't know if there are any Barstow's residents here would like to speak to it. I'm guessing that it would or could have an impact on other properties on the street. I am very concerned about that. And I, I guess one of the questions I'm asking is. Um, has the planning board put in any mitigation, uh, regulations that would address that kind of, uh, concern?
Uh. Well, it's something that gets looked at with every subdivision as far as the drainage. Um, it's good that you're speaking to it tonight, Mr. Marshall, to make us aware of the water issues because obviously from a sheet of paper, it's hard to see those things.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr., uh. Teneri, you're, you're going to be designing that subdivision at some point or are you just going to be divide, dividing the land?
That is correct. That's, uh, well, some, uh, down the road, yes. And that will come through before this board. As a definitive subdivision plan, which will obviously require, uh, drainage analysis. And I'm sure the board will have, uh, an independent peer review person, uh, view such a subdivision plan if and when we get to it. So.
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm glad you're aware of this and I'm glad that you bring it up, Mr. Marshall. Because it, it is an ongoing issue that we see with some older developments that maybe weren't scrutinized that well. So it's something that we do look at very seriously. So take that into consideration, uh, before you start designing.
One other thing, if I might, uh, mark.
Go ahead.
Early on, when we moved into the house, uh, in seventy-three, we had some, uh, well issues. And I, you may or may not have heard the name Alden Perry. He was, uh, he drilled Artisan Wells, uh, back in the day, at least back in the seventy-three and had, he had books and books of history. Of wells that he had drilled and, uh. When I met with him about drilling, uh, what ended up being two wells that didn't come in very well. Uh. He gave me some of the history of the land and the topography and what was under the ground and so forth. And at the time. He told me that, uh, and, and this is part of my concern. He told me that I have bedrock under my house at twenty-five feet. And the reason I know that was that's how much casing I had to pay for. And the rest, you know, you just drill down in the rock and, and that's, that holds the water. Uh, he said, out behind me. There is an outcropping of rock that emerges. So my point is between, it, it, assuming that's accurate. Between my property and that outcropping, uh, I'm assuming that the bedrock. Must go up and create less soil between the surface and the bedrock. Thereby, to my thinking, creating a smaller sponge. For the water to be absorbed into.
Recharge, yeah.
And, and, okay, thank you. Uh, and. I'm guessing that's part of my concern, now, that is part of my concern, that there's a smaller area to absorb it. And therefore more water will flow off. He also told me that as we go down toward, uh, Precinct Street. That bedrock drops down to one sixty. So the whole thing, he said, slants like this. And so I, I wanted to make the board aware of this concern. Uh, quite frankly, even though I'm not, I don't have the, the property on the end of Barstow Street, uh, on my side, which I think is twenty-four. Um, that is an area where considerable ponding, uh, has occurred for years. Um, with heavy rain, snow melt, et cetera, et cetera. In the wintertime, it freezes over. In my opinion. It creates a dangerous, uh, situation, uh, et cetera. So I want to make the board aware of these concerns.
I want to thank you for bringing it up and I just, I don't want to get too far off topic tonight because we're not discussing that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I look forward to having you at those hearings if this subdivision comes forward.
It does address twenty-four, uh, Barstow, Mark.
Can I, can I speak up? I'm sorry. I actually live at twenty-four Barstow Street.
Oh, there we go. Could you identify yourself then?
My name is Melissa Root.
From?
Twenty-four Barstow Street in Lakeville.
Thank you.
So to kind of carry on what Mr. Marshall is saying about the water runoff. I, I actually have a very big concern with this, even this one lot, which this does pertain to. I do understand that. Obviously with the subdivision thing, that's not what's being addressed here, but it's my understanding that this lot doesn't fall under the subdivision rules. Which concerns me because my backyard is pretty much a marsh to begin with. I have an in-ground pool that has a French drain around it just to protect it from rising from rainwater. My concern is that with the building of this house, wherever it's going to be on this lot. That is going to prevent the absorption of the water coming through and do significant damage to my property. So I have very valid concerns about this. Not to mention, which, you know, I don't really have a leg to stand on, this house is going to be right on top of us.
So I, I guess I would recommend that you maybe take some photographs of the site of. Your property and the adjacent property.
Okay.
So that you have some evidence, not just hearsay, um, to protect yourself after the fact if there is. A water runoff issue where maybe soils got repitched and they push water back to you. If there is a water runoff issue where maybe soils got repitched and they push water back to you. Um, a- a- and again, I'm I'm not trying to avoid this as much as this approval not required thing is.
No.
Just that, it's it's not the development portion of that. So once this goes to the building commissioner for a permit, if they're going to disturb more than uh an acre of land, it will come back to us for site plan review, which that's the one thing we do look at is drainage uh and runoff. Uh, which, a- again, we don't have really a whole lot to say today today other than the plan meets the three critical requirements.
Right, right.
And we have to move on. But uh uh and again, I'm not trying to dismiss anybody's concerns as much as with the the subdivision will probably be the bigger concern when a roadway is put in and street drainage and typically when a roadway gets put in, that's when sheet flow drainage gets cut from moving one direction to the other. Uh, because a roadway wouldn't allow that, that's when a good engineer would design culverts to keep the water on the surface flowing. Uh, not dam it up on, say, your property or the neighbor's property. Uh, but and again, I don't want to get into the weeds tonight. We're we're taking up this gentleman's time on something that is really not on the the topic of agenda tonight. But again, not trying to diminish your concerns. I I would hope to see you all back when this other property does get developed in the future.
Do we have any idea when that might be, Mark?
Uh. Azu?
Uh, yes, uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think it will it will be presumptuous on my part uh to speculate. I know at some point down the road, they will tackle that. Uh, to the point that you made earlier, uh, regarding um sixty-one A, they have to look into that. Uh, it is, it is not something that you can readily snap your fingers and do. But uh, obviously, when we do that, uh, I am looking possibly six months from now to come back uh before this board with the definitive subdivision plan. But no s- no definitive um plan has yet been made. But I just wanted to make the board aware of the fact that that is uh what will be, what will be coming down the pipe.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And uh, both of Mr. Marshall's concerns and I don't have Melissa's last name. So both her concerns and uh Mr. Marshall's concerns are actually very well uh well legitimate concerns that must be addressed if in fact we propose to do a definitive subdivision. And uh, we've been doing similar work for more than forty years. So uh, I'm very much aware of uh the need to uh be cognizant of drainage concerns. And that we will take care of.
Thank you for addressing that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Michelle, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Um, yeah, so I guess my question is, so for the A and Rs, we are supposed to have the wetlands on there. And I know it shows no wetlands on this plan. And I did check the GSI maps for Lakeville, and for some reason, there was no data available for this location. So I'm wondering, is there a way to, with all this talk of how much water, is there a way to verify whether or not there are in fact wetlands in this location? Um, since there's none shown on the plans that we received?
Oh, there is. Well, that's a very good question. Uh, yes, there are no whatnots on this property. And uh, but on the on the uh property in the back, where they have some cranberry bogs, there is substantial wetlands in uh bordering vegetated wetlands as as a riverfront area. Where that is not within the locus of the uh E and R. So to answer your question, yes, there's significant wetlands on that parcel that uh when we do the subdivision, uh, that will all uh be addressed and that will all come to light.
Okay, so this this um lot one that you're looking for has no wetlands, though.
As well as parcel A, both part, but they have zero wetlands on them.
Okay. Unfortunately, that is written on the plan. So even though it remains a question in my mind as well, I think by virtue of the fact that it's written on the plan, the liability therefore passes to the surveyor.
So, that said.
Excuse me, what what's written on on the plan?
There are no whatnots on the property.
Uh-huh.
On those two parcels, parcel A and the house.
Correct, correct. I missed it.
Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Chair, um, Mr. uh Etunero uh mentioned that there are wetlands out by the cranberry bogs. Are you referring to the ones, sir, that are behind Mr. Cod's property?
Correct. And and naturally, if you look at the land that is uh, my chairman's screen yet again, Mr. Chairman, or?
Yeah, yes, you can.
Yeah, so if you look at our here, right up here, where it says map eighteen.
Yes.
Yes, that's where we have significant wetlands uh beyond, obviously, that. The remainder of that parcel is not shown here because it is not a part of the uh E and L plan. But there's significant wetlands over here in the back.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, excuse me, wh- what about the, what about between that point and the property we're talking about tonight? Any wetlands in there?
Nope.
I I would say there may not be because the water runs off too fast to become wetlands.
Pretty good slope. It's a, just across the property, there's over ten feet of pitch from left to right.
That's correct.
It all actually goes towards uh Melissa, Melissa's property. Uh, that said, uh, I make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for Barstow and Montgomery Street, map eighteen, block one, lot two, and lot two B, lot two C.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, I'm sure as a butters, you'll all be notified when uh this comes back for a subdivision. Uh, it'll be called a definitive plan, most likely. Uh, and.
What what does that mean, Mark? A definitive plan?
It's just what they call a definitive subdivision plan or a a Form C is also another name that they call it. Uh, it just means it's a subdivision. It's more than one, one lot that doesn't have frontage, you're creating a roadway. So I would hope to have you all back to at that discussion when it comes in. And I'm I'm assuming that you would all be notified as a butters at that point.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, uh, members of the board for indulging us. Have a good evening and stay up the uh heatwave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Take care.
Uh, next item on our agenda is Julia's Way, release of covenant update. Uh, Kathy, you have that one?
Um, I sent that along with the fee scheduled to Amy, so I'm just waiting to hear back on both of those items.
Okay, so we just put that on our agenda for the next meeting then?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, moving along, we already handled item number six, the three-ten-teneth Welch ZBA. Uh, master plan implementation, update fee review project. So where are we with the fee review project?
Um, same thing. I sent that to Amy, both of those items. So just waiting to hear back from her.
All right, I just.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, under the master plan implementation um item as well, I did talk to Rich and there's been some ongoing discussion as far as, you know, where, how is the master plan coming along, where does it stand? Um.
So that's, that's actually what I was looking for.
Oh.
Uh, Jack had sent me some comments based on the selectmen's meeting from Monday night. So if you don't mind, I'll run through the comments that he provided directed at the planning board so we can discuss them. Uh, Rachel Cameron wanted to know, uh, the planning board regarding land use goals. I I guess out of the master plan two-point-one and two-point-two. Uh, wondering if we had done anything creating zoning bylaws to enhance and promote industrial and commercial development? Uh, when will new commercial and industrial areas be identified and designated for development? Uh, when is the economic development committee going to meet and status of open space residential design?
Um, I'd just like to make a comment about open space residential design.
Go ahead.
So when I first came on the planning board, I was a huge proponent of it. Um, California, it was very common to do sort of what we call cluster developments. It's a, it's a olden style where you try to put homes closer together so that you could have um less lawns and more open space. And I was a huge proponent of it. And it was actually Zink who who counseled me. Um, and I then did further research and unfortunately learned that even with the best of intentions, when you set up any, when you leave any space open, it always has the potential to be unranked and undone. Just like some of our deed restricted affordable units have been. So when we do a cluster development, which I know is very trendy, and I personally would love to be a little bit closer to my neighbors and their lawn to mow. The fact of the matter is, is we we actually leave ourselves open for greater density down the road because there is no method in land court to keep anything in perpetuity um unless the ownership entity is willing to do so. So unless it's deed restricted by the owner, there there's no control point on on that. So I'm not as supportive of open space development as I used to be for that reason. And I also appreciate the genius of the people who came before us and set our minimum lot size to one-point-six acres, which in and of itself does protect open space um in many, in many, many cases.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, did you want to elaborate or if I missed anything?
Um, well, I was going to say that we do have that spreadsheet uh with the goals by date. I didn't know if maybe we want to start passing that around again, get it on our, you know, get it out in our packets maybe once a month just to keep tabs on it. Um, I know the first goal was planner and that's moving along. Um, and I think the next goals aren't until twenty-twenty-two. Um.
Well, I think we're going to have a shot here at doing something with the design guidelines because they've broken ground for that um new development that's going next to the funeral home, the storage facility. And I think that's going to be a really big motivation to get people in the community to reconsider design standards. And I think we should be prepared for that by spring, by spring meeting. I'd like to escalate that uh quickly because I think we have some momentum behind us to get that taken care of.
So if anybody, I think, would like to work on any of these items, and I'm happy to enter them into new business at any meeting. So, you know, Barbara, if you wanted to work on some design, design standard stuff, even if it didn't get put on the agenda and we wanted to talk about it during new business, I'm fine with that. Or I'm saying, Michelle, if you wanted to do the same with uh anything else.
Well, I think what would be helpful, Mark, is if we had some guidance on if we were to draft the bylaw, like we need to start sketching out the timeline. I mean, having a discussion about what those design items would be is one thing. Um, but then, you know, getting that that actually implemented into bylaw, because I think we have to have public hearings, probably workshops. Uh, you know, I'm thinking six to nine months is a sh- is a very quick timeline for something like this. Kathy, what do you think?
Well, I mean, if we're trying to draft on our own, definitely. But I think, like we've done in the past, even with the fee schedule and stuff, if we could go through some of the towns and see what they have done and hate to use the term, but utilize, not plagiarize, what's what's been done before us.
Lorraine has a bunch of work that she did on that, so I'm going to check with her as well.
Okay.
Mark, uh, my my question is, I don't know the mechanics of how we interact with the different departments and the board of selectmen. So like, my question is, what am I, what it, what am I supposed to bring back to the master plan implementation committee meeting next week that Rodney can pass on to the board of selectmen regarding La Camera's comments?
We're working on it. We discussed it at our last meetings. We're working on it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I, I'll go back to your comments. I will say the create zoning bylaws to enhance and promote industrial and commercial development. Uh. What would you do?
I'm sorry?
I have a mask on the board in general. What would we do to enhance and promote industrial and commercial development? We'd have to create a new industrial zone in order to create industrial growth. And as far as commercial development, I think we have the corridors that we want of Route eighteen, well, five. I don't think we want to create anything more. I think we just want to try to cultivate where it potentially is.
Well, and Mark, remember, yeah.
There's a lot of vacant spots that I think could be bought up before we try to rezone property, you know?
We we also, this mass, this master plan, which was last updated twenty-twenty, well, twenty, what year was this updated? We didn't have, have, there were two, there's been two massive changes since this time. The governor's law about the um multi-family development in the, in commuter rail friendly neighborhoods. That's going to promote three-family development and all kinds of other stuff. That that's, that's a huge factor. And then the other thing is we've had a huge shift with the use of commercial space, both both industrial and just general commercial. Um, so it it almost feels a little bit. I agree with you. I don't know that we need to to expand anything more, but I almost feel like we need to have a conversation about if if these things are still applicable. And maybe that conversation shouldn't even be had for another year. So we don't really, things are still settling out.
I mean, I, so.
Should I bring up this uh, the housing that's going to, that probably, of the potential will take place once the commuter rail station is up and running?
No, what we're talking about is the governor passed some laws relative to uh modification with affordable housing. We covered it a few meetings ago. I'm happy to resub the information to you. But basically, you know, the the state needs more affordable housing. And they're going to be pushing that envelope in every possible way they can. And one of the ways is they're now going to be allowing multifamily development by right. Um, and that includes three families and so forth. So it's, it would be a nice to uh develop some of our village uh, sort of a village atmosphere, I feel. Um, but again, this is a bigger conversation. So, you know, li- land use is changing very rapidly right now. So.
Right? It it seemed to go from industrial to residential.
And you go from like light industrial or light office all the way to ginormous warehouses. Like, where's the middle gear someplace?
Jack, when's your next?
Next week.
Okay.
Next week.
You go back and say we're working on it, but we want to uh hopefully have a new planner. And we're going to bring them up to speed and work with them on that.
Yep.
Because we uh, I think leave it at that. We we hope to have a new planner by then, and we're going to work with the new planner to implement these items.
Mark, gee, what do you think about having somebody who's on master plan maybe contribute towards a design uh, design bylaw? I don't know about a committee, but maybe a little team of us to kind of get the ball rolling. Maybe somebody in on the master plan would be interested.
I'm fine with getting somebody else to.
Jack, Master Plan Committee, if anybody on that group would have time to maybe just have a once a month meeting?
Uh, I really, I mean, I really don't know these people well enough. I mean, I I can ask Rodney. I'll ask Kim.
Offer, offer at the meeting, offer with all of them and see if any of them.
Yeah, so my recommendation, Barbara, I would say just to, just do a quick email and maybe send it to me and then Jack so I can see it. But just just sort of state, so you can just go to the meeting and regurgitate. But basically say that the the planning board was asking if anybody on master plan had any interest with working with the planning board to help create a design standards bylaw.
I mean, I'll.
Barbara will send you that email. All you're going to do is ask.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Uh, next item on the agenda, minutes of meeting from June 10th. Did anybody get a chance to review those?
I did. It looked good.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve planning board minutes on June 10th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Epstein.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries with the majority. Next item. Minutes from June 24th, 2021. So, uh, actually this was. Uh, small. We just had a quorum. It was Peter, Michelle and myself.
I read the Mark, uh, motion to approve minutes from June 24th.
I'll second that. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Epstein.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack, you got it?
Epstein.
Thank you and myself, uh, approved. So motion carries with a majority. Do we have any old business that we need to address, Kathy?
Oh, there was one more set.
Yeah, the 22nd mark.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 22nd, uh, meeting minutes.
And we had a full board there, so everybody's in on this one. I second that. All right, Peter seconded it, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Oh, wait, Michelle?
We just one correction, page three, paragraph three. I asked if grading was included, not drainage, grading.
Okay, so amend the motion to make that correction.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve July 22nd minutes of meeting with the change to page three, paragraph three. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara? Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries to approve July 22nd. Uh, under new business, I have a memo, which I actually did not get a chance to read. I was. On the phone all day going through some other stuff, uh, for tonight's hearing. So pursuant to the Mass Endangered Species Act, MISA. It is, and its implementing regulations, the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Of the Division of Fish and Wildlife would like to inform you of. The availability of the 15th edition Natural Heritage Atlas effective August 1, 2021. This is something that the Conservation Commission is very interested in.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that this, um, notice be shared with the public via the Lakeville email process. So maybe that's a message to the Board of Selectmen. If they feel it's, it's worthy, but I, I feel like a lot of citizens would like to know about this.
It's a good idea. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to send a memo to Board of Selectmen to share this document. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, both aye. Motion carries unanimously to share that information, so that it hopefully gets shared with the public. Did anybody wanna talk about the CPA? I'm sorry, uh. Yeah, maybe preservation.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Great job, Michelle.
Oh, boy. I get so nervous. Did, did I, did it, did I make it clear? I hope. I felt like I stumbled over certain words. I hope that I got.
So back up for other people who don't know what we're talking about and explain what happens on Monday.
So I was able to present to the Board of Selectmen, um, myself and a group of, you know, other individuals from boards, committees. Public have been working on, um, educating ourselves. In the hope of educating our town of the benefits of a CPA. It has been tried in the past. It, the first time it passed, a town meeting failed at the ballot. Second time it was defeated at town meeting. But with all the development that we see, I, and the outcry that I, I mean, it seems apparent. Um, I'm hoping that, um. We'll get that momentum going and, and get people out to, uh, vote. For CPA because all of, um, these years that it didn't pass, we're missing the funding from the state. We're missing the matching grants and, um, you know, the benefit to our town. Um, in the different areas that it could benefit, the open space, the historic preservation and providing. Affordable community or senior housing. So. I was excited to do it, a little nervous, but, um, like I said, I hope, I hope, um, it got, you know, the main idea across.
It did. And, and I think it's a good time to just reiterate for anybody that's watching that doesn't know what CPA is. CPA stands for Community Preservation Act and the idea is that there's a very modest surcharge, um. For each homeowner and the average homeowner, we've done the research, it was like, I believe it was $38 or $39 a year. It's a very small figure, um, not to diminish, you know, the expense in any way, but in thinking about what you gain with that modest investment. It is quite, quite an exceptional ROI if you consider the, uh, the multiple positive impacts. Tonight, we've seen one of many, um, properties that are gonna come out of 61A. Um, you know, right now, we have not had the resources to address any of those, uh, those properties as they come out because. We don't have the funds to, to, to acquire the land and we don't really have a mechanism by which to protect it. Um, and we're gonna see more and more of that. So I think, uh, if anybody wants more information, there's a wonderful website. The, the team has put together a Facebook page.
Yes, the Facebook page, the website, I haven't finished it yet. Um, I do have to update.
We have the Community Preservation.org, which lists out, that's the state, uh, statewide. One that lists out all the different projects that were done and I really enjoyed looking through that because. I didn't realize there were so many cool ways that these funds could be applied. Um, you know, and I think if you take a stroll through how some of this money was spent. It, it really helps open your eyes to the potentials of what we could accomplish here in our community. Michelle, what are the, where would you like people to go for more information and who should they email?
Um, the Community Preservation Act Facebook page. And that Facebook page also has, uh, some items shared from that Community Preservation Coalition. Page as well. So you can see some of those examples on the Facebook page. Um, there's also. A Gmail which is just lakevillecpa@gmail.com. So if you have any questions, lakevillecpa@gmail.com.
And I believe you have a list too for anybody that wants to keep updated.
Yes. So if you wanna be on the email, uh, list. You, you know, just send an email to that address and I'll add you. Um, it's not gonna be bombardment. It's just gonna be. Um, some information, especially once if it's determined, uh, that it's on the fall. Town meeting, as long as they can agree on having a fall town meeting. And, uh, then alerting people when or if it can make it to the ballot. So.
Michelle, how much your presentation received by the audience?
Sorry to say. I haven't had any, we haven't had any, um.
They didn't respond at all or?
I haven't had any, uh, emails to the email, uh, but there have been people reaching out asking for signs and, um, I know that. People are trying to notice the signs.
But nobody booed, right?
No booing.
You, Mark.
Are you getting a sign?
I have two.
I love it.
He was getting three. I thought you were getting three.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, we put one in my mom's house too.
And I think he's getting one.
Yep.
Already got one.
I love it, guys.
Give me one, I'll get one.
Awesome. I appreciate the support.
You know, um, Michelle, I, I was at the meetings where these were defeated and I, I think you, you have a good, um. I, I think they were missing a few things at the last meetings. I, I know that they were focusing so much on the tax, uh, the increase in taxes and, and not so much in, uh, like a couple of points that you guys had where. Like, um, you know, it was 1%, is that correct?
Yes.
It's a flat 1%. It, it'll never grow to two or three, right?
Yes.
Um, I was listening to like a talk radio show and, uh, somebody called in and Boston just passed this, the, the city of Boston. And, uh, to, you know, people felt, it was very interesting how this guy would put it. He said, uh, it was snuck in. Um, and now it's an increase in taxes and he actually said it was, uh, hundreds. You know, basically it was hundreds of dollars. That's based on how much his houses or building is worth, but. It was hundreds of dollars and he saw it as just a, you know, an increase in taxes and just a way to draw money, but. Just imagine if the very first time this one had passed, how much money we would have had in the past few years to do things.
Well, isn't that the point? We should focus on that. How much money the town is gonna get. Being complaining about the taxes.
Money though, but how many chapter properties? Maybe we would not have been developed, you know, what, what other things in town that people, you know, keep saying they'd like to see. Walking trails, dog park, etc., senior housing.
Yeah, that would seem to be the thing to do because people are always gonna be complaining, I don't want my taxes to increase. But if they know that, I think we need to really focus on all the other benefits of this program.
And it's not a tax. It doesn't disappear. It doesn't.
Right.
The roads that you see not getting fixed, it stays in town, in a fund that we manage. The town, the residents have the say. They can apply for whatever projects, so it's really just a community tool.
Go get them, girl.
And it's a, it's a committee of.
Go get them.
That decide how the money's spent, right, Michelle? It's the committee of people of residence, so it's not a board that decides how the money's gonna be spent. It's appointed volunteers. Who determine those resources, but I would challenge everybody on the planning board to go to communitypreservation.org. And look at how they have spent some of the money so that you have some examples of maybe how we as a community. Um, can use those resources to better ourselves and our area and our. Housing and, and open space and all of those kinds of things, because it's gonna take every one of us picking up the phone and calling our friends. To make sure that this passes, because if it doesn't pass, I think it's gonna be third strike you out for many, many, many years. And we will see the change in this town be irreversible by the time this ever comes back around. And Michelle, thank you for your tireless work. You are to be commended for how much time you've put into this.
Thank you. And I gotta, I gotta, it's not just me. There's a team of us and Sue Spiller is, you know, she's a kick ass.
Who's going to do the appointing?
Um, so it would be a member from planning board, a member, member from CONCON, a member from open space, a member from historic committee or commission. And then member at large is, so whether that's three or four, the, the way that the CPC. Currently is, it, it would need to be tweaked because it has a member from the housing authority. We don't have a housing authority. So we would have to find another member to make that nine-member committee full.
The, the land use boards, all the boards in town will have something and then two or three.
Or, or three or four, maybe.
Townspeople.
Exactly, yes.
Very good. Uh, anybody else have anything else under new business before I, uh?
Mark, you need to talk about the, uh, the serpent project, unless you wanna postpone, but I think they need a figure from us. And so what we're talking about is the, uh, we need to do an update to our housing production plan. It's, um. Not scheduled until 2023, but we need to allocate the funds so we can be ready, um, for next, uh, next year.
But Serpent's gonna do that work for us?
Serpent will do the work for us. We need to allocate the funds. I did confirm that we do have 40 hours, so. Board of Selectmen has 20 hours with Serpent and then we have 20 hours for Serpent. So for. Cost planning purposes, we can apply those hours if we choose to towards that project. Um, I did email everybody with the spreadsheet that Serpent sent over. If you, I don't know if you wanna look at this now, Mark, or if you wanna wait. I don't know if enough they're, they know if they're having a town meeting, so maybe we can ask everybody to look at it and vote. At September 7.
Aye. Our next meeting?
Yeah.
September 9.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Uh, cause I did see the email, but I, I didn't really get a chance to delve into it too far. I did, like I said, I did read, there were two choices, I think, that they basically gave us.
There's three and they didn't send any samples. So even though we have samples from what they did last time, I think. It may have changed and I would like to see ser, samples for what we will be purchasing.
Do you wanna request them and then maybe we have that for September 9?
I did, so hopefully, I was hoping I'd have them by tonight, Mark, but.
That's perfect. Yeah, yeah. Just from now until that week before Labor Day, a lot of people take this time in August.
Barbara, what's an hour of time, uh, what's that equate to, um, dollar value?
Um, well, I would look it up for you, but I didn't print it and my, um, I had to.
Oh, that's okay. I was just curious, cause, uh.
Yep. It's in the breakdown. I, I'll have that ready for you next time.
Oh, so it's not a problem. It's just curious, cause they, they, if we have hours, uh, that are allocated to us, but all their prices are in dollar values, you know? I was just curious how many dollars, um, 20 hours is worth.
I'll, I'll track that down for you, but just as food for thought, um. You know, it has come up where other boards have needed to use serpent resources, so I would hate to allocate. All of those resources on behalf of the town towards just this one project. I would feel a little bit better if maybe we used some of the money and then budgeted for the balance.
I think open space is looking for some hours from Serpent as well.
Exactly.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna get the planning, uh, the Selacan hours or some of the Selacan hours or whatever they want.
They may have allocated those for 2021. Um, our funds would be 2022. So I don't leave any of the 2022 funds that have been allocated. Quick feedback, I glanced at it. I'm for option one at this point until we see the samples, but we can discuss it more when. Uh, on the 9th.
Okay, so Kathy, put that on the agenda, please. Thank you. And if you, uh, get that sample email back, Barbara, if you wanna just kinda circulate it to the board and we just won't respond?
Yep.
Or, or get it to Kathy and she, she can circulate it.
Perfect.
Uh, so just to be clear, our next meeting is on September 9th, 2021. At this point, I'm gonna say we'll keep it a remote meeting. Uh, just because of my conversation with Ed Cullen today about, uh. Them preferring not and then maybe as we get into the fall, if we know we have a light agenda, we'll try to get one. A, a week or two in advance to get it at the police station meeting room. Uh, we had a bunch of applicants tonight, uh, for our butters and stuff, so tonight probably wouldn't have been a good night. With, uh, the restrictions that they wanna put on us. But we did, we did have an in-person meeting on Tuesday with CONCON.
How was it? I saw that, but like, how did it feel with getting back out there and?
Great. It's like riding a bike. That was nice. It was nice to get back out there. So. All right. Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.